Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, please. If I have to answer the portion of the question that you, uh, rationed time. Hey, um, yes. You can ask us many questions. And we are in our four, two. All three are here, okay. All right, you can do that, you can actually do that afterwards. We're, it's fine. And candidates, once we're done here, you can put your, go back down the table. All right.
Thank you.
George, are you good?
Are we good on audio?
All right, we are back with Henderson City Council, Ward Two. So, starting with the city councilwoman, if we could have your one-minute bio. I will rate it, please, for the listener at home, state your name, who's for answering any of our questions, so the listeners know, at home, know who is answering. Uh, also, I will be holding up a green file holder when you have ten seconds.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Uh, my name is Deborah March, I'm councilwoman of Ward Two, and I've been in this seat for almost two years now. I've had the good fortune to be able to serve my community for a number of years. Prior to joining the city council, I served for six years as a planning commissioner for the city of Henderson. I retired in 2009 from UNLV, where I was the director of the Lead Institute for Real Estate Studies in the College of Business. I'm the mother of a warrior, a former Army Ranger, who served two tours in Iraq, the two in Afghanistan, and was awarded a Silver Star for gallantry. So, I'm very proud of my son, and I love the work that he does, and continues to do on behalf of our country, and, uh, I'm a proud mother, and a proud representative of the citizens of Henderson.
Let's go about like forty minutes left.
Oh, okay, forty, forty seconds left, okay. Uh, prior to, I have a broad and varied background, serving our community. Um, I served as the secretary treasurer of the Henderson Community Foundation, I'm actually the secretary treasurer of the Nevada League of Cities, and also was appointed by the Nevada Legislature to serve as Vice Chair of the Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, which looks at cooperation between state and local governments, and how we can better affect cooperation between the various agencies to better serve our residents.
Thank you, and, um, thank you very much for allowing us to be here, and, um, appreciate it, uh, to have the opportunity to all of you here, and thank you to the audience as well. My name is John Simmons, I'm a candidate for city council, Ward Two seat. I'm a native of Henderson of fifty-three years. I am a retired construction manager after thirty-two years with the city of Henderson. I have been in my own business for the last eight years. I've had twenty-four employees, so I know what it's like to sign both sides of a paycheck. I have, uh, given back in many, many different ways in our community. I have been on many different boards. I am a former, or, uh, former Clark County Housing Authority Commissioner of eight years, built safe house, those in the community. Um, just short little spill about where I'm at. Thank you.
Hello, hello, do you all hear me? It's okay. Uh, I'm Kevin Donovan. Uh, real quick biography, uh, I'm the father of four children, uh, married to my beautiful wife, Janine. We've been residents of Henderson since nineteen ninety-eight, uh, after I graduated college from Texas A&amp;M University. Uh, like John, I'm a construction manager, that's what my degree is in. Uh, I've built several properties, uh, on the strip, the most recent one, the Cosmopolitan of Las Vegas. Currently, I'm a candidate for Henderson City Council, Ward Two. I'm running, uh, mostly for my children. Uh, as, as a candidate, I don't see much future for them in Henderson, I don't see us digging out of the hole, and I'm ready to serve and ready to give back, so that my children can grow up and stay here, and, uh, I can watch my grandchildren live in Henderson. Thanks.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and start off with, uh, George.
I guess I'm gonna ask the question I had last, because I'm just trying to go so quick. Um, with the fiasco of the last city manager and how that was handled, performance reviews are a really important thing for government workers. I'm gonna amend my question a little bit, because these workers are being paid by their tax dollars, and I feel that anybody who makes over a hundred thousand dollars in salary, which there's only, there's only a few, should be able to be reviewed publicly, because only five, five employees now are reviewed publicly, and half of those, and half of those performance reviews are actually done behind closed doors. So, what would you do to make more transparency in the government, and to make public, uh, workers' reviews open, so that we can see them, and what we're doing for them?
Okay, real quick, I'll give you the quickest answer that I can give you. Um, when Mayor Hayton was elected to the city, to mayor, uh, in, sorry? Oh, Kevin Donovan, I'm sorry. Uh, when mayor was elected, there was vacancy. The city council chose to appoint someone. During that appointment process, uh, the city, through the direction of their city attorney, violated the open-able law. It was all published, it was very clear. Uh, that situation was then, uh, I've, I've pressed it, because I believe that the city violated the city charter as well. Just recently, at the last city council meeting, I reminded the city that there was a report that was supposed to be prepared by the city attorney's office, it was directed by councilman Steve Kerr. That report, to date, has still not been done. So, openness and transparency, it, it almost like it doesn't exist in the city of Henderson. People obviously don't do their jobs, and if elected, if we have to do it in public, we'll do it in public, uh, to show the public, and it's their money, and these people are in charge of the future of the city, let's get it done, and get the right people there to take care of Henderson.
And for this, uh, for this seat, uh, everybody just to let you know, it will be posted on YouTube, and on the Better Than Politics Facebook page. If you have anything to add afterwards, you can go on and actually add volumes to the Facebook page.
John Simmons, that's exactly the problems going on, the transparency. We talk about interviewing the appointed officials in the open. The mayor, who has been there for twenty-three years, who supports my opponent, is one that does not, for some reason, believe in, um, uh, evaluation of the appointed officials. That hasn't gone on. I, we know of the other, other, uh, recently they have, yes, absolutely recently, because why? Because we've had this problem going on with the former city manager. We know that the former city manager is good friends of my opponent, we know that, and Kevin is absolutely right. This needs to be in the open to the people, the transparency of evaluation. It has not been going on, and they're part of it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and this is councilwoman Deborah March, and for the record, I was not on the city council when the former city manager was dismissed from the city of Henderson. And since joining the city of Henderson, I actually implemented, along with the city council, a policy and procedure for evaluation of all appointed officials, and that procedure has been in place for almost a year now, so we do evaluate in the open our city attorney and, and city manager and city clerk. Uh, we also have done a lot of things in the area of openness and transparency, we started having regular public meetings, we also moved development agreements out of the legal department, so that the public could have an opportunity to have a voice in community development, so that these agreements are open and transparent. That's one of the other areas that we've implemented. I am, I am committed to openness and transparency, I'm committed to honest engagement with the citizens, and I think that's essential going forward into the future. Whatever issues have occurred in the past are not, they are the past and not the future.
Chris?
Thank you, Chris Miller, we've got a story for you, friends. As all cities are facing budgetary difficulties right now, what is your plan? And, and we know that, that salaries are part of that issue, so I don't really wanna talk about salaries and, and people. What can we do besides the people issue to, to shorten the gap of, of money in, in the state, in the city's budget?
This is Deborah March, city councilwoman. Uh, I believe that we're rightsizing the city, we're looking at what's going on, we're looking at the revenues that are coming in through our tax revenues from the consolidated tax, I think it's property tax and sales tax, and we're rightsizing and responding to what's going on. So, we actually, in the last two years, have made ninety million dollars in cuts across the city, and those have been prudent decisions, looking at where we have to go, what we need to do, that's a fifth of our budget, so we're, we're ahead of the game. I think that Henderson has, has long been in the lead in terms of responding to what needs to occur, the cuts in, in travel, the cuts in vehicle allowances, and salary cuts that our, our appointed and elected leaders have taken, as well as our staff. So, and, and in talking to our bargaining units, they're all willing to make concessions, they're willing to open their, their contracts again, and do what needs to be done to rightsize the city and to make good decisions, because, you know, we're all in this together. Coupled with that, we also need to be looking at what we're doing to create jobs in the future, to stimulate our economy.
Uh, John Simmons, I, um, we need to do more, and the collective bargaining is gonna be, uh, a very difficult, it's gonna be very difficult in the future. There need to be more cuts come, come forward. I don't think, I don't believe that at this point in time, that this, this council has, has done enough to make the cuts. We know it's a difficult time, and, um, to bring the jobs into this community, and diversify in this economy right now in Henderson, is very, very important. And that is, working with Nevada Development Authority, be able to do that, and to bring the revenue stream into our city, where we're losing now. The Nevada Development Authority, Summer Hollingsworth, knows that bringing the businesses into our city is very important. You even saw an article just reading yesterday in the Las Vegas Sun, having to do with the technical, um, business that was brought into Las Vegas. Those are the type of things that I'm talking about, and bringing it into our city, and even into our downtown redevelopment area. Thank you.
Kevin Donovan, real quickly on this issue, because it's a great question. Uh, just recently, this last week, at the city council meeting, the finance department announced that their budget forecast is off even further than they thought it was off. In looking at the, what was presented in that meeting, our city currently operates on a negative operating budget, we spend more than we actually bring in, the only reason that it balances is because of this little slush fund sitting over here, and, and they're robbing from that slowly, praying that, that the future will correct itself, rather than making the tough decisions that need to be made in the city. I, I heard my opponent say things like, "Well, we cut travel and vehicle allowances," I mean, jeez, that stuff happens in the private sector at, at big banks on Wall Street, and then, I mean, it's happening in your city government, we have vehicle allowances, or, it's absurd. How do you fix it? My solution is real simple. Uh, we need to work with Clark County School District, everyone talks about, you want jobs, you have to have educated workforce. Clark County School District and the state need to allow local entities such as the city of Henderson to partner with them, and get local control of our schools, so that as Henderson, we can showcase our educated workforce, and track those businesses to Henderson, so that we can grow our city.
May I, you do.
Lou LaBelle, Veterans and Politics Sociologist, UNLV. As a social researcher, um, I have some concerns in the matter in which the candidates and the incumbents tell me how they form their public opinions about their constituents. Um, my first question is for, um, councilwoman March, do you have a relationship with UNLV, um, and do you, I know you have a relationship with them, for Dana, my question. Do you actively and consistently, um, use the UNLV resources to, um, do social, uh, research questions or social surveys on your constituents, to find out, perhaps, if through your board meetings and association meetings, um, you're missing what your constituents might really be interested in, and then after you respond, the, the two other candidates tell me if they think it's a good idea to create that partnership, and what you would do to foster that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah March. Um, that's a very good question, and I actually have a wonderful working relationship with UNLV, with President Matt Truska, with the Brookings West Institute, and, and many of the folks at UNLV, um, Center for Business and Economic Research. In fact, I meet, uh, probably monthly with the folks from the Center for Business and Economic Research. I'm on advisory board of the Lead Institute for Real Estate Studies at UNLV, and work closely with Ron Smith over in the, in the research arm of the university. Um, I believe that we should be using research, and have used the research of the university, and I know in the, in the past, we've also looked at, uh, other, other outside vendors have used the research arm of the university, such as Republic Services and others, to do research on behalf of the municipalities as well. Oh, okay, so, no, I have a wonderful working relationship with UNLV, and I think education is a catalyst to economic development and diversification, and we need to be using all of our resources to ensure that we're attracting the kinds of industries and businesses that we're in.
John Simmons, I'll just take it one, even one step further, um, and I like that question as well, because what we need to do is tie in the other colleges as well, in Henderson, Nevada State College, the Community College, and working with them. Perhaps they have the research too, that we could be working with. And I think it's very, I think it's key, and when I talk about diversifying our economy, perhaps we can even bring in the businesses that could have programs that could be tied into our college out in Henderson, or the UNLV college as well, and helping with those kind of researches too. So, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, but I think it should go much further in talking about our colleges in Henderson as well. Thank you. No, I, I just, I support it, and, uh, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
I'm thinking, this is Kevin Donovan again, I think it was a two-part question, would you bring in UNLV, and then how do you, um, get, form opinions of your constituents? So, to answer the first part, I, I'm open to hearing what anyone has to say, whether it comes from UNLV, uh, the, the, uh, University of Nevada State College, a, anywhere, and creating a partnership is great, but more importantly, to answer your question, is how do you form opinion of your constituents? You have to talk to them, you have to treat them nice when they come down to a city council meeting, you should see how this council treats the people when they come to the board. It, it's, it's almost crazy, and that's what has to be stopped, because the people I'm talking to, the people that, the people that I'm gauging their opinions of, they want the Sloan pit mines stopped, where we live, they want it debtor than dead, they want the one day a week, and these gigantic garbage cans that were public services slapped in our driveways, they want that done. We, we didn't, no one asked for that, that just came from the council and the public services. And they want the, they want the waste in government stopped. This absurd payment to Miss Peck, because they couldn't figure out how to fire her, is, is the tip of the iceberg for the amount of waste that goes on in Henderson.
On Facebook, put it on YouTube. Councilwoman, would you like to rebut?
So, I think that, that we are prudent, thoughtful leaders in Henderson, and we do reach out to the community, we have open dialogue, and our doors are always open, my door personally is always open to anyone that wants to come in. I'm regularly meeting with constituents, in fact, I'm meeting with constituents five to seven days a week right now, and hearing what their concerns are, and I'm, I'm very much concerned, and in touch with what, what's important to them. Uh, with regards to the Peck decision, again, our decision was merely to ratify, um, the council that I sit on, I was not involved with the termination of the former city manager, but I was, I was involved with the ratification of a, of an arbitration decision, that, that was a binding arbitration decision by, uh, an arbitrator who decided that, you know, Miss Peck should, should receive that settlement. So, I, it wasn't really a decision that we were able to make, it was already made before we, we gave an audit commission.
May I respond, John Simmons? I just wanna say that, um, regarding the republic service and the trash, this is, my opponent is the one that's championing this one day a week, nobody wants it. The second part of this is that the, um, uh, the, the former city manager of, of which she was, uh, terminated, I would have appealed that, because the insurance would have paid for that appeal that we had. I would have appealed that decision, because the district court favored in the rule of Henderson, the ruling of Henderson. So, I would have appealed it, because simply, the cost would have been borne by the insurance company, not the people of our city.
Can I respond?
May I?
Uh, we, uh, we're already into the decision, one point three million dollars, Deborah March, by the way, we're already into the decision, one point three million dollars, we already had legal costs of about three hundred thousand dollars, and we would be looking at additional legal costs, and if we, if we lost again, we would have to bear those costs. With regards to the recycling, my opponent suggests that I'm the champion of recycling. I must tell you, I believe in recycling, but we're in a pilot project, and that's what I'm championing, is a pilot project, which is a one-year pilot project to evaluate whether it's prudent to continue with the recycling process, to provide, to reach out to the community at the end of a year cycle, which are seasons, to give feedback as to whether you, the summer season's just too hot, and, and it's not tolerable for our residents, we're open to that feedback, and that's something that we would do through the UNLV system of evaluation, when we're here.
May I respond? No. We have a Facebook, you can go to the YouTube, we have two more panel members that need to ask questions, go to the Facebook, talk to Steve Sanson, we can get you on the radio show, and you can continue on. So, John?
Uh, yes, Donovan, right, Vice President of Veterans and Politics, and it's actually gonna be your opportunity to, you know, continue further, because, uh, I'm going to ask, you're both running against the incumbent here, so I'm gonna ask that you rate how she's doing, and what you would do better. Thank you.
John Simmons, first of all, when it comes to the, um, republic service, I don't believe it's government's business to be telling people what they're going to do when it comes to recycling, or one day a week and, and trash service. It is all of our responsibility to recycle, that's what our responsibility is to do. But to, to say that you're gonna do this in the winter months, that's a no-brainer. Why don't you try doing that in May, June, July, and August? Um, and to say that you're gonna pick up our trash for one day a week, uh, is, is unacceptable. And I believe what they're, the program's gonna be, is that they're gonna require it after they go through the pilot program. That's where they're going with this, because republic service has to pay for a recycling program that they bought. That's where I'm going with it. Um, I, uh, I, I believe that that's where my opponent is, is that they want to just tell us how we're gonna do things, instead of asking the people. And that will certainly be out there with my constituents, to, uh, have, uh, meetings, uh, bi-monthly, let's take, for example, Sun City area, thirteen thousand residents.
All right.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Facebook.
Kevin Donovan, uh, how's she doing? I, I think the openness and transparency is, is, is almost nonexistent. These trash cans showed up, I got a letter in the mail from Republic Services, the trash can showed up two weeks later, it was that simple. And these trash cans, if you all have not seen them, they are almost the size, if you take the two together, ones for recycling, one for your garbage, they're almost the size of a car, okay? I have nowhere to put these things. And I've been storing them on side of my house, until just last week, when my HOA finally wrote me a letter saying, "You can't have these garbage cans in front of your house." So, here, here's a perfect example of, the council isn't even communicating with the HOAs, of how are we gonna deal with that problem? We're, well, it could be the greatest plan on the planet, but you have HOAs with CCNRs and restrictions, that, that now penalize people for having these garbage cans. I wrote my HOA back and said, "I didn't ask for these garbage cans, I don't want these garbage cans." They say Republic Services on the side of them, they belong to Republic Services, if you got a problem, call Republic Services." And that's kind of the problems that we have with, with our current council, is they are not talking to residents, they're talking to big businesses, and they're shoving it down our throes.
Facebook, rebut.
Thank you. Yes, Deborah March, Henderson City Council. We did have a, a letter that went out to all communities that were gonna be participating in the process of, of the recycling program, and then actually hosted six meetings across the community, and then attended community association meetings that requested the meetings, and actually, in one of those association meetings, the residents of Solera Community said they didn't want it, and so we pulled back, and we didn't offer it in their community. This is a pilot program, a one-year pilot program, designed to go through four seasons to get feedback from the residents, to see if it's something that they wanna participate in. Uh, we've seen an, an increase in recycling from six percent to thirty percent since the recycling program has gone into place in Henderson, so it's a significant commitment and investment by residents in the program. And again, at the end of the year, we're open to feedback, and, and we are open to, to modifying the program, or, or looking at twice-a-week garbage, if that's what the residents want. We're looking for that kind of feedback to make those decisions.
If I may rebut, this is Kevin Donovan. Uh, that Solera community, for the record, they had to call up Channel Thirteen Action News to, to get any action out of the city council. They had, it was on the news, it was multiple nights on the news, there was an old man with a cane, and, you know, he, he showed, "Look, this is my little bag of trash, it was in a Smith shopping bag, this is what I put out every week for the garbage," and they brought me these gigantic garbage cans. And he goes, "How am I supposed to even roll these down the driveway?" And I, I mean, I remember the, the news episode ever so perfectly. So, it's, it's not that easy, if you wanna communicate with the board, you have to become a cast of thousands with your whole HOA, uh, to come down to a board meeting with yellow shirts, or whatever color you might pick, to get any action out of the council. It, it's not the way governments are supposed to do it.
Councilwoman Deborah March, I'd like to respond. Um, Mr. Donovan, I remember that during the whole, uh, challenge process, when he was challenging my appointment, I contacted him, and met with him, and had a couple of lunches with him, and, and opened dialogue with him, and had breakfast with him, and to, to have dialogue, so that he knew that I cared about what was going on in the community, and that we were engaged, so I think he's making a misrepresentation to, to all of you, that I'm not engaged, and I'm not available, like, doors, my doors open to anyone, my phone number is on my marketing material, my, I give my cellphone out to folks readily, and I'm open and engaged and committed to the future of our community.
And Kevin Donovan, if I may. No. There's enough trash talk about trash. Go to Facebook. Go to Facebook. Sir, 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 go to Facebook. You can write volumes, you can do it there. We have panel, two more panel members that need to ask questions, and we don't have enough time to do it, so, uh, Lou?
I won't take much of your time, I don't want you to get yelled at anymore, just follow the rules, and that won't happen. Uh, this is for, uh, councilwoman March, you just quoted a percentage, you said recycling went up from six percent to thirty percent. Was that a study done independently by UNLV?
Uh, you know, that's a, that is information was provided through by Republic Services, that, in fact, I saw Bob Coyle on TV, I think, the other morning.
So, I'm sorry, not to cut you off, but what you're saying is Republic Services is reporting that they're doing better on a program that they're also sponsoring? Okay, thank you. That's why we need sociologists involved.
I agree, I believe in social scientists.
Good afternoon, Colonel Tom Chek, United States Attorney for Retire. Ooh-rah! Well, to shift gears here, many of the panel today, during the interview, have, have focused on economic development, which ultimately leads to potential revenue and employment. It's extremely important, especially in a state of Nevada. Uh, I, I know that none of you candidates, to include the ones we've interviewed before you, have a magic wand, you just, you know, you just can't pull these companies out of the state of Wisconsin and bring them here, and place them in, in Henderson. But it's interesting, because some of the questions that were asked for the council, uh, for the candidates for, uh, North Las Vegas, were, were asked in you. Uh, there is an asset in this town, and I find it interesting, there's only two of the candidates mentioned Nevada Development Authority. John, I know how you stand, and one other for the North Las Vegas, and if there's any organization in southern Nevada that has their hand on the heartbeat of what's going on in this southern part of the state, to include their counterparts in the north, it's NDA. None of the other candidates expressed the, um, the validity of the organization to begin with, but more importantly, what they're doing on a national basis to bring companies in here, and when I talk to my dear friend, Summer Hollingsworth, I say, "From a political perspective, what kind of input are you getting from the council people from North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Las Vegas?" He says, "Tom," says, "you gotta go out of your way to get their attention." And this, this is an organization that is, their sole purpose in life is to bring in new companies. And by the way, Henderson benefits, has benefited probably more than any other city. So, not so much for you, John, but for, by the other two candidates, why don't you use their assets? Why don't you plan to use their assets?
This is Deborah March, Henderson City Council, we do use their assets, and in fact, we pay annually to the Nevada Development Authority from the city of Henderson, and our economic development folks work closely with the NDA as well, and we work hard to identify target industries. I've been involved and engaged with the NDA for many, many years, probably fifteen, twenty years, I, I was on the board of NAAB, National Association of Industrial and Office Properties, for fifteen years, I was Vice Chair and founding board member of the Urban Land Institute, all organizations that have been involved and engaged with economic development and diversification in our community, and clearly, Summer is the person leading the charge, and, and heads the marketing campaign that, that goes out of state and reaches out to companies, and there's so much more that we all have to do, and in fact, I, I have contended that each one of us should be an economic development expert, because each one of you leads the state, reaches other folks, talks to other companies, and can attract businesses to our community, so every one of us has an important role to play in our community.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, I'll go first. Kevin Donovan, real quickly, I, I'm not opposed to using anybody that can help bring jobs to this town, whether it comes from the Dev- Development Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the Convention and Business Authority, I don't, I don't care where it comes from, we should be open to, to what anyone has to say at this point in time. And to, to take this question one step further, we have to be doing more for the businesses that are here as well. Um, my opponent is on, this was in the paper the other day, she's in the business, she's on the Business Retention Committee for Henderson Development, for the Henderson Development Authority, and retention committee, we've lost Zappos, we've lost Ford Motor Credit, we're losing restaurants, lose, 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 where's the retention? This is bad, this is not good. And as Henderson councilman, I'm